Long, really. Been a long.
Brian, you get everything there?
Yes, thank you very much.
Yes, you must.
Darren and Misty, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you.
Okay, Misty, you hear us okay?
Yes.
All right, thanks. We had some technical difficulties earlier. I got it resolved now.
Well, at least we're not saying.
Okay, all right, we're recording. All right, so.
There it is down soon.
All right, good evening. We call the Senator City Council meeting to order for June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Everyone in attendance, please rise with me and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic.
Amy, were you religious or not?
Remain standing, please. Your heavenly Father, we give thanks to thee for this day. We're grateful that we can come together as a community and be strong together and be unified in all of our our goals for the city of Centerton. We're grateful for this free country. We're grateful for this land. We're grateful for all that we have. We ask that thy spirit be with us tonight as we decide what's best for our community. We're grateful for our citizens who are actively engaged. In this, we pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Roll call, sir.
He Roche. Justin Cowver here. He taking bottom air. Gelsey Reed. Darren Warren.
Here.
Misty Elam.
Here.
All right, so the first order of business is approval of the city council meeting minutes from May ninth and May thirtieth, special meeting. And they've been in Dropbox for about a week now. So does anybody have any questions? Now, if somebody make motion to adopt the minutes from May ninth and May thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
You have a motion? We have second? Are you all in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, next is acknowledgement of the Senator Water Sewer Commission meeting minutes from April nineteenth and also April twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, and a planning commission meeting minutes from May second, May sixteenth, and May thirty. Do we have a motion? We have second? All in favor? Anyone opposed? All right, next, I'm going to bring Shannon up and she's going to submit her financial report for May.
Good evening. So we are currently sitting at forty-two percent of the year, which means that our revenue needs to be above forty-two percent and our expenses need to be below forty-two percent. We're currently sitting at forty-six percent of revenue and thirty-six percent of expenses. So we're actually sitting really well for the year. Um, in the packet, I included our ambulance billing for May. Um, we did collect four thousand three two eighty-seven. And I know it seems like it's not a lot between April and May, but you have to remember that it's still really new. And with ambulance billing, I used to do ambulance billing. It takes a long time to get those things paid usually. Our outstanding AR included in the packet as well um is currently sitting at two hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred fifty-three seventy-nine. Um, besides the contractual adjustments, we should be collecting roughly about one eighty to one ninety on that. And contractual adjustments are for Medicare and Medicaid. They have a certain dollar amount that they could pay up to. So if the bill is a thousand dollars, the contractual adjustment would be that they pay three fifty and we write off the rest. Um, and then I included an email from Tyler. He's just giving you the information on the interest rates for our investments and letting you know what the interest rate is now and what it will be next year. Um, it's currently sitting at about four percent and next year he's expecting it to drop a little bit to that. Does anyone have any questions?
Ambulance piece, uh, what happens after like the one hundred and twenty day mark? I mean, is there a process or escalation?
Yes, so um we are contracting with a collection agency. So once it gets past the hundred and twenty days and it sits in outstanding AR, it gets transferred over to the collection agency for collections.
You know it is by chance?
Um, they just sent the information over. I'm going to have to email that to you. We just got it. Um, and we haven't even signed a contract with them yet. So we have to discuss what their percentages are going to be. So I can send that to you.
Thank you for getting me in.
Yeah, good. One, is there any outstanding like earmarked money? You know, we've talked about funds that we've used in the past. We've talked about the shelter. We've talked about other things. Is there any funds that are still out there that are earmarked that haven't been spent so far?
I believe it was, was it the Parks and Rec? But we have.
We saw, yeah, pending on that, yes. And we're in the model. We are in the middle of remodeling our shelter a little bit. Then we have a little bit of money earmarked for that too. Plus there's money in it, but. Somebody make motion to accept the financial report and the corporate. If I got a motion in a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Next is department reports, and I should have most of the department here. And their reports are in the packet. Do you have any questions for on any report we submitted? Okay.
Uh, yeah, actually, yes. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm out of my coffee today. Just, just from the uh, the pond piece. I know we're working in battle that the updates on that. I know we have like a potential beaver problem.
Yeah, if you don't come up. Does look better.
Beaver and nutrients right by the dam, I think.
Yes, sir.
I know it was a humid, sticky week last week. It continues. It's going to be. And I mean, we've had some improvement. Is there any updates on the ponds? Tough to battle. We've talked a little bit about the.
Yeah, we pre-did it three times um with the help of our department. Um, we cleared all three beaver dams. One's already returned. Um, the smallest one. There was two in the back. First one was what about twenty yards? The other one was about thirty, thirty yards and about four feet tall. Um, pretty impressive for beaver dams. Um, I think it was. After talking to game and fish, Josh was talking to an individual today with a different type of chemical treatment. We, we were um going to try out at Zebra and Keller Pond first and see if that's effective. Um, we're not the only city that's struggling with this. Any natural spring pond is having this issue in Northwest Arkansas right now.
Is it time? I mean, do you, what pond do you need to draw a lot and rebuild it over there where that bridge is?
Say that again.
I know we've talked about lots of reviewing flash pad, you know, like the rocks, the little area like.
We, we did make a little alteration to the dam. We built it up a little bit higher so the water would retain more. Um, with some advice from game and fish, they want, they talked about buying the pond, um using dye with a to restrict some of the sunlight that's getting to the bottom, um to keep some of the vegetation from growing. Um, but like even when we were out, it was so the algae and the vegetation was so thick, it was clogging up the propeller. Um, that's how bad it was.
Get ready for five hundred more.
No, we have to be very careful because we have downstream effects that could potentially throw things because these chemicals that are out there that are safe for the environment are meant for stagnant water that are just sitting still. This is a natural spring that's flowing. So everything that we put in there could be potentially pushed downstream. Um, so we have to be very careful. We, I can't have a fish kill. Um, it would be in trouble.
Fish, okay. Any other suggestions you have outside of what we're doing?
We're very limited. Um, me and Matt talked about and Josh talked about even tying a rope and dredging it. Um, we're going to purchase another boat for public works. Um, just a small little John boat where we can potentially come up with a scheme to pull something. Um, but currently we're just chem, using chemicals that are safe for the environment that are approved with the game and fish, just called copper sulfate.
Yeah, if we drug something across both sides and just kind of get it to one side or not, I don't know.
We thought about it, but it, you, you have to go out there and look at it and see how thick it is to you know, to really get a grasp. Cause even myself went out there and went through it. It's, it's pretty thick. I mean, it's pretty bad this year. So one of the work years I've seen it as in big wise not covering.
That's great, thanks.
We're, we're, we're going to continue to try to treat it, but we have to go in stages and keep trying to treat it. And what, what it boiled down to today this year is we just, we, we didn't hit it early enough. Um, lesson learned. We didn't know that, you know, like I said, we, it's just a cocktail of bad things between the beavers, the temperature, the shallow depth of the water. It's just a breeding environment limitation.
Anything else on the part?
No, I'm done with questions.
All right, so the next part of this meeting is our public comment section. This is open. Anybody in the public who'd like to speak directly to the council, uh, this does have a three minute time limit. Uh, looks like I have probably several people want to speak this evening, so please be cognizant of the time. Uh, this is not a question answer session, but we will listen to your comments. Uh, at this time, I will open up for public comment. And I will start the time, but before you speak, please state your name and your address so he can put in the minutes.
Holly Brokaw, address two nine five one Laurel Circle. After the uproar in December, I was finally allowed in the shelter as a volunteer. I dove in and made it my mission to help get dogs socialized and adopted. I have fostered six and they are now in good homes. On May twenty-fourth, I sent an email to all the council and mayor regarding many concerns with other shelters being run under the police. Questions about why after two texts were fired, only one was replaced. Technically, she's the new clerk, which was a new position in the January council meeting. So they've been using the new clerk as a kennel tech, preventing her from doing what was stated in her main description. Taylor would go on to work twenty-three days straight, missing his baby surgery in Little Rock because he knew the dogs wouldn't get proper care, all while trying to train to be an ACO. I also questioned when a remodel will start, when an AC will be installed, what's kind of this five thousand dollar evaluation, what training has been provided? Where's the computer software system and more? Many of the people here tonight donated towards the care of the dog I mentioned to you that I took from the shelter in March when she wasn't receiving proper care. I knew if that dog died in her kennel, that would be more bad press on the shelter. After being there several days a week and seeing so much, I can't say quiet any longer. At the December fifth meeting, council member Warren said, if there are any needs, let us know. So here I am. And while I asked for this to be on the agenda, which would have given me more time to speak, I didn't. So I'm talking fast. I need to admit, I was very lenient on Jeremy in my initial letter. Here are some very quick observations. Jeremy wasn't providing water for dogs when in their outdoor runs all day. He can't identify tapeworms or the protocols, so I took care of it. He doesn't do flea and tick treatment unless I mention it. He can't multitask. He can't deal with the public and calls employees and on their day off or on lunch break to help. And I lost all care to cover for him any longer when he hit a puppy in the face, causing it to yell and crawl to me till tucked. As a taxpaying citizen, I am not in agreement with him being the supervisor or in control of the dogs. You need a natural director who knows about animal welfare and the health and is compassionate, fast acting and welcoming to the public. The chief wanted to meet with me prior to this meeting to get ahead of what I'm going to say prepares comeback. He's well aware of what many people, not just I feel about Jeremy, and I'm eager to see what his plan of action is. There's more I can't say and the people that can don't feel protected to speak up. The lieutenant accused me of trying to run the shelter and told the employees to stop talking to me. What was I to do when I saw stressed out staff with no help, dogs not getting proper socialization or vetting? I'm not sure why I'm being treated like I'm the one doing wrong. Perhaps this is why the mayor and Cody didn't allow visitors. I'm grateful I've had the opportunity to see and help as that's my passion. I have no desire to run the shelter, but I will never sit idle and watch dogs suffer or employees being intimidated and not supported. My grandpa always told me, see the need, do the deed. I now challenge all of you to do the same.
See the what?
See the need, do the deed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just reminder, please, I, I know your name, but please say your name and address for him.
Romaine Kabilsek, forty-nine Carfield Drive. Holly has addressed some of the issues that have come to light over the shelter management under the direction of the police department for six past six months. I would like to remind you that your shelter has been mired in controversy with mismanagement by directors for nearly a decade. Aside from dismissing them, the same plan of replacing them with yet another inexperienced manager or supervisor who has no real interest in animal welfare has gotten us to where we are tonight. Moving your facility away from a pound to shelter, which embraces the five basic freedoms for your shelter animals, take work, education and dedication. Quality of life for both your animals and your employees must be embraced by all parties. The public needs to know that your shelter, shelter staff is expiring long hours and in one instance, that twenty day, three days without a day off. While staff has reached many extra hours and are appreciative of additional income, as employers, there is a reasonable factor that seems to have gone by the wayside here. Safety demands and employees are not overtired, which will lead to accidents and burnout by the staff. Current staffing at the number of local shelters is, is on a document I will make available to you. It is typical for a shelter to have approximately one kennel attendant to every ten animals. Yours has one to twenty-three. Did you know that as of June first, your average length of stay was seventy-four days and that you have several dogs that are over two hundred days? What is the plan for these dogs? Who among your staff has the time to go ahead and rehabilitate and make them good candidates for adoption? We have progressive sheltering methods incorporate emotional needs of the animals in the care protocols. As you listen to these challenges, to these challenges, these problems, I'm here tonight to suggest that the leadership has failed your dogs. Days of promoting someone from the maintenance department's department to be in charge of care of animals should end. The police, although good intention, are also not good candidates for this work because they know nothing about standards of care. It is time to search for and hire an experienced shelter manager. Your city's growth path shows that more animals are moving in dailies. And with that, expectations by your citizens for compassionate care will be more visible than ever. It is time to stop believing that the system you have in place now is adequate. And advocates like Holly, Jackie Roach, myself, others are here to help you. Got no charge to your city. Imagine how many animals Holly and I have touched in the past six months, all done free. And it is an investment of approximately sixty thousand dollars a year. Wouldn't it be worth it to revisit these issues over and over again? Are you not tired of us? For the safety of your animals, employees and the citizens of Centerton, I ask that you include in the discussions of hiring a qualified manager and have that person serve as a direct report to your mayor with a monthly report to you council. Once again, creating a direct line of accountability to the top leadership in your city.
Thank you. What else? Once. Please say your, I, I know I'm repeating myself, but please say your name and address for him.
Holly Rouse, two thirty, Linkin First Way. I don't have anything fancy or tight job, but in my personal opinion, it is not the opinion of my former workplace, I assume. It was very easy to see the decline in compassion, especially from Jeremy. You know, waiting to last minute to get dog's care, putting up a fight about any kind of bill or any medicine, just waiting to last minute. Animals coming in for surgery when they clearly haven't been bathed. You know that they can't have a bath for seven to two days after search surgery and they're coming in with fleas, ticks, coming in covered in dirt. It's just very easy to see that there is no compassion, especially whenever there's just not, they, they didn't care who they're adopting to. There's, nobody cared. And it's really sad to see. Because really big animal advocates over here and that's supposed to be representing our city. It's not doing a very good job. Thanks.
Awesome.
Joe Zunstam, two thirty, Townview. Oh, about, I guess about three weeks ago, we're moving, you know, from Maine to Townview. And there was a cat coming at my door placing chasing away. Anyway, so when we moved, the cat started coming over there. It got frightened. And it had a collar on, so I tried to find something. I called the the shelter and they said that they would get back with me. They didn't. I went back over again and they found out that it had a chip on it. And so they were going to check on that. And then they said they would call me and they never did. Took about three times. The third time I went over there, I guess they must have gone from social friends and been bitten. They called me and they took it. And I would have kept the cat. We've got a cat that's been there twenty years and it isn't there long. So but anyway, just communication that they would have went there and they said they would call me.
There. Anyone else? Once.
Cheryl Lucius, they're too smart, lady.
Senator? Or that, what city?
No, I, we rescued.
Oh, no, I just went to the city for the. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Can you talk into the microphone? I can't hear you.
I've taken multiple dogs from Centerton. Some of them are great dogs. Some of them, I've got a couple there that had been no medical care at all. One had suffered all weekend with a broken bone. I picked him up and it was when Cody, I believe is his name, was still there. Picked him up and immediately had to have surgery on this dog. I also picked up a Boston Terrier that when he went into the shelter, he was so twenty-seven pounds. When I got him out, he was twenty-three pounds three weeks later. They're not getting adequate food. They're not getting. And the explanation that I received was that they have more potty accidents if you feed them twice a day. They're usually twice a day. Animals should be eating and getting clean water and proper medical care every day, not just on days that somebody's available. These dogs shouldn't be sitting in ninety degree temperature. Whenever I've been into the shelter, it's really warm in there. And I know the dogs, they're, they're hot. And also they get cold in the daytime. And it's not bashing Centerton. We all love Centerton. We all have to work together, give these animals the right care and the right attention that everybody needs the council, the city, everybody needs positive outlook instead of a negative outlook. Everybody is receiving. Thank you.
How long ago was this, ma'am? You, you said, how, how long ago this happened? Wait.
Right before he was released was the Boston Terrier.
How long was that? I mean, was that eight months ago, six months ago? I'm just trying to get a timeline.
It was weeks, but it was like a week before he was released.
Okay, that, that's all. Thanks. I just wanted to know.
No, where's the animal? The animal?
It's in with police report. Anything, anymore? I'm a close public comment, but I do want Cody to come up and address the council. He, he put in his police report. If I, I'll put it up there. But I'll do it while he's talking.
I'll be honest right now. I'd rather just address you all because there has been assumptions made and there has been statements made about intentions. Correct this evening. So I'd rather just address your, your concern and your questions. Well, what can I, what, what concerns, what questions can I answer for the council's line?
So Cody, um, what, just to say, there was a meeting between Holly, Romaine and best friends.
Jackie.
Jackie, yes. And so one of the things we talked about is timelines. Um, one of the things that I would like to see, and we discussed this, is timelines for end milestones. Um, whether it be for a supervisor or somebody in that leadership type role. Um, timelines on building renovation and um any kind of staff training. Can you touch on those three things that were discussed in that meeting so the public can know?
Yeah, so our internal planner now, I, I've talked to lieutenant, I've talked to the captain, and I'm going to be saturating my resources of my time directly on animal shelter. Because that's what's going to take right now is to get these things as far as timelines hammered out. Um, so this week, um, main uh focuses have been addressing the three, my three major goals that I have for the shelter, three major going on renovations, maintenance projects that I currently have. Uh, one is to deal with the drainage issue that we have. Um, two is to deal with our ventilation, uh, to get that sorted out and to get that up to a a better flow, um, to connect the two sides together. And then third is to make a better work surface or cleaning surface for the kennels area. Um, right now they're, they're cinder block. I'm trying to figure out a good solution for making that an impermeable um surface, uh, to make it to where it's not going to absorb waters, not for hazards or poop or those sort of things. Uh, so those are my main three priorities right now. So, uh, when I came back from, uh, in March, I put a hold on the renovation project, uh, because it was mainly focused on the front of the house. Diving into, uh, the issues, um, starting in March, I was like, hey, we got to work on these other things first because that's first priority. You know, I can't work on the front of the house when the back of the house has got to be fixed first. So those are my main, uh, three projects that I have. I have one bid, um, for the, um, the drainage issues, um, out of the three contractors that we contacted, one actually provided a bid. Um, so I have that. Uh, the first ten kennels is at a cost of just under sixty-nine hundred dollars. Uh, so to do all thirty kennels is going to be a cost of roughly twenty-one thousand, if you figure in twenty-two thousand uh, with material, you know, cost and taxes and so forth that we have to, you know, pass on us through the contractor. The, um, I don't have a solution yet on the ventilation. Uh, we are working with a company by the name of Osborne who deals with, um, facilities like ours, even larger facilities, um, animal housing facilities for ventilation. Uh, we're in the process of, they're giving them all the dimensions for our facility. And what we currently have, um, you know, size, materials, what we're looking for, and they're currently drawing it up as far as what they can offer and what we need for that space, uh, to do the changeover, um, air changeovers and the, the ventilation, but also the, the intake and the you know, pushing the air out of the facility is with the exhaust. Uh, so we're currently working on that. I don't have a timeframe, um, on that. They're, they're doing the drawings right now to figure out exactly what fans we need, uh, where, where exhaust fans would intake and to get both of the facilities to work together. Um, those of you who are familiar with the shelter, having that wall, two is just the main, um, the box mover that we took out. It's just, we have to fix the, the circulation there. So that's one of the top priorities. And then as far as the, uh, the ceiling of the surfaces, um, currently works with our, the local, um, contractors in the area. I have tough coat coming out. Uh, they're going to give you a bid both on a I think it's a polyethylene, uh, coating, it's like bed lining. Uh, they also have a, um, what you call it, a, uh, epoxy coating. They epoxy significantly more, more cost, but it has a thirty year, uh, warranty on it. Um, so I'm trying to get all those costs figured out. I'm assuming that between the three projects that we have outlined, that will absorb our seventy-five thousand dollars of the budget that we have for this year for renovations.
Have to get it right. We're going to write.
Well, those, those are great. And I would love to see each month progress reports if you um, what about staff? So while those are good, staff is good because we need, like Holly's mentioned. Um, we need staff that understands animals and, and so we had talked about training. So your thoughts on that?
So I've, I've been trying to find the training. All of the training has gone to online, uh, so that'll help facilitate the training. Now, I'm not a huge proponent of online virtual training for everything. Uh, so even for Taylor, our second ACO, I have found a, they actually have, um, there's a company out there. It's called Animal Control Academy. Uh, they have some classes mainly up in the north. They have a couple down. Uh, they have some classes mainly up in the north. They have a couple down in Texas, some. That are wanting training in person that we're looking at. Um, the national associations have gone through online, uh, type of a training. So one of two things is going to happen. Either I'm going to send Taylor to this training, which will be probably. Sometime within the next six months, depending on those those classes, um, it'll be either up in the majority of them are in Illinois. And they have a a basic and they have an advanced as well, uh, with that. Um, through locally in the state of Arkansas, we have a few classes that are coming up. There are, they are more specialized trainings as far as the euthanasia and the chemical capture. Um, for lack of a better term, where they use the the dart gun and they try to blaze the, you know, animal because. Hard to catch or have, um, issues with aggression and so forth. Uh, but those are just extra classes on top of the basic, uh, training and so forth. Um, so getting that stuff hammered out, it's good. I'm going to assume the majority of it is going to be online, uh, based training.
And short term?
Short term, we're doing the the in-house, uh, training as far as the the maintenance of the kennels and the one of those things.
Is he going to help me with some training in-house with some texts or something like that?
She's given me, I've been going through the through the materials that they have provided. Um, and also she has provided some just daily check sheets, checklists and different things like that. It's it's better than what we have, um, currently. So we're going to be changing those up. Uh, to go along with that piece, which leads into the software needs and things. I'm okay. Demo schedule will be as far as, uh, trying to figure out a software solution. Uh, I found one. It is, there's, I shouldn't say one, there's a ton of them out there as far as shelter softwares. A lot of them are.
We talked about this in January.
And so we found the one and ended up they did not work for municipalities as far as being housed within the lower forty eight states as far as the cloud, uh, storage and having the security measures in place. The one that I found so far that actually has dealt with, um, government is in useful shelters and things. It's called Shelter Pro. Um, so I have a demo with them at thirteen o'clock in the morning, uh, to get that figured out, see if that'll be a solution for us. My biggest concern with it is the cost. Um, first year cost is going to be roughly, uh, eleven thousand dollars. Um, the after that, as far as having, um. Our, I I figured we'd have six or seven users, have at least four to five staff, and then, you know, somebody as far as outside of the shelter, you know, if we're still at the PD. Uh, to be able to have access to the system. So I was figuring on six to seven users on the system. That's twenty, um, twenty five fifty a year. Your liberatory current cost, where it's really expensive on the cloud hosting. I'm trying to figure that out. Um. They have worked with the partner who has all the security measures in place. Their main hub for cloud storage is in Connecticut. They have redundancies in Arizona for the emergency. Um, management of the cloud storage for municipalities. That thing with it is four hundred ninety one dollars a month. So trying to figure out if there's a different solution for that. Um, because even like with our reporting system that we utilize at at the PD, it's it's a remote based system. And that's what the majority of everything is is going to. Um, like our body cameras and our dash cameras that we're utilizing now, it's all a cloud based system. Um, so that's where I'm running into those things. I'll 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 be presenting those numbers. I'm trying to find other things, uh, to do. Um, and.
What's the, so I didn't, what's the count of dogs in there averaging take the last couple of months since Bentonville's had their own facility?
Uh, when I was out there, I counted twenty three.
We were looking in January. Do you remember what it was? I don't.
When Bentonville was out there, it was forty.
Twenty three now, it was closer to forty in January.
So we only have one. We only have one person working in the kennel right now.
We have one kennel technician. Um, now that was based on, we had two kennel technicians during the time that we had forty plus dogs. And when we cut our population in half, the thought was, it's the sea. Now we do having one kennel. What I found in reading the material that it provided to me, uh, we are on a rough estimate. What they say in the literature. Is we need scheduling at least nine minutes per animal per day for cleaning and sanitation. With the hell, if you count twenty five dogs, that's three hours and twenty five minutes a day. One kennel tag by that number is sufficient.
In.
That's going off the literature provided.
Um, what I would like to see that the next, by the next council meeting is timelines, um, on. You know, your drainage, your ventilation, all those kind of things like, hey, I'm starting this now. I hope to have X, Y, Z by this date, X, Y, Z by this date, whatever. Um, same with training staff. I know you've laid out, you know, training for, you know, Taylor, but. For term. So by the next council meeting, we've got this person trained or we're doing this checks, just kind of a milestone checklist as we discussed. By the next council meeting that you can present.
Um, Jackie, uh, with best friends has offered us, uh, two scholarships to the conference in Houston. Um, her up on that for sure. Uh, that is August, uh, tenth level as well. Um, and her suggestion is for that to go to more of the leadership assistance, um, you know, to, because it's really looking at the training squad facilities, all in welfare. Uh, veterinary care, you know, the oversight of the shelter operations and so on in shelter.
This is Darren. I have a question. So. Are we investigating employees striking animals? Have we looked into that?
Yes, sir, we have.
And what what was the result of that? Is that like, uh, was any findings?
I don't know.
Cause I find that disturbing that, you know, we had the issue with our previous director. Now we're having employees strike animals.
I'll review on that one. Not being aware, I don't want to get in a personnel, individual personnel issues in a public forum. You can discuss it in executive session if you like.
Okay. And then, you know, following up with, are we looking at hiring somebody with some real. Uh, skills when it comes to the administration of a animal shelter?
At at the current time, uh, Jeremy Rhodes is facilitating the role of our management at the shelter.
Well, from everything I've heard, maybe it's time that we, uh. Look with somebody with a little bit more experience.
And I'm, I'm, Darren, I'm just going to caution you, be be careful about talking about personnel matters in in a public meeting.
Just a recommendation to maybe hire another employee.
Yes, sir.
Um, I guess one of the questions I have, I mean, I know during the other comments, no questions asked, but I mean, we have some. Resources in the room, like, is there anybody, Holly, that you've had a lot of experience with this? Is there anybody from a. Drainage? I mean, do you know that's what they specialize in locally? I mean, besides just general contractors, like, is there anybody you'd recommend that maybe we're not thinking of? Just asking. Out there, anybody?
Jackie provided. And what's some information about finding a shelter building?
She's provided two resources for, um, shelter planning as far as, um. Going through those those avenues as far as those resources now. Whether or not they want to come in and help us redo what we currently have, I I don't know yet. Um, as far as that that design, uh, the the con, the the contractor that we have right now that had actually given us a bid on it is Dave's plan. Uh, I will address one thing as far as the the dogs are being fed twice a day. Um, I have been out there and I have not witnessed a dog without water. Now, Holly has stated that she has witnessed it in front of two, uh, the shelters, the tension, and they did rectify. That as far as getting them water, um, and so many, and dogs are fed twice a day, the kennels are being, you know. Cleaned, um, every single day, water, or food bowls, you know, cleaned every single day. The, I don't want anybody to think that the animals are not being taken care of. I mean, they're getting. Food, water, shelter. Now, we're talking with Holly as far as in the meeting, we, a lot of the issues that. Have have come up, um, they were pretty, uh, pre-March and some things came out. That's why we had to make some personnel changes. And and I'm not trying to speak for Polly and on issues of. The new is the new issue that came out in our meeting. So. And then it's been in me.
And, um, remind us again, any donations that come in for the shelter? Where, does that go into the general fund or is it the shelter fund or?
Yeah, but so we have a donation account and at on the finance level, what they do is they actually have it accounted for. Uh, differently, so they have, you know, in there, um, anyone's even, or we had more things that were, um. I'm here, I hate saying your part, but, you know, separated out there. As far as a donation account, it is in the financial report and everything is separated out as far as. This is shelter money, this is PD money, uh, that accounts been established for. As long as I've been here, as far as the the donations and things.
I'm trying to make sure everybody understands.
Correct. It's not, it's not in the general fund. It is, it is going to be utilized for shelter. So I think it'll be utilized on now the the donation that we did receive, it has not been, um, spent. Uh, the money is in the account and it has not. Um, there are for any, uh, special project, um, at the time. It's in the account.
I I had a question, but he gave it to you. Did he say he wanted it to go with anything to pick for it?
I'm sorry.
Did he say he wanted that earbark for something or he just gave a general donation?
Part of that, no.
Okay.
It is, this will be used strictly for, uh, the shelter. It won't be used for anything else.
That's all I had, but I'd look forward to next meeting with all your timelines and.
I'm I'm. Focus on the shelter and I'm going to rely on. You know, my other two to to help me out with the PD and run that. And I'm going to dedicate my resources to the shelter that lined up.
Hopefully it won't be in this situation again in six months. You had a question about the systems because I know that's something we had talked about before, like when someone, the dogs are checked in, and there there's a record that started. And then I'm guessing that. You kind of vaccinations, all that kind of stuff is tracked as well as maybe the feeding. Okay.
So on.
Have you looked at three of them, I believe, and he found one that was.
Right.
You could swag it a little bit. It wasn't.
It was the one that was selected out of the three at the time. Um, unfortunately, it was a, it was Canadian based and so it wasn't. Here, actually, through everything and just not been being viewed. Um, now, the one I'm looking at, Shelter Pro, it is broken down into bigger modules. So you don't have to go. And buy like the enterprise suite of everything if we don't utilize it. Uh, one of the modules, like a, what they call their trap module, like if you actually had chat traps, like kind of like library, if people checked out and took and brought back, you had accountability of those, those things. Obviously, we're not going to, we don't have that established right now. Uh, but they have shoulder management, they have an ACO, they have what they call animal identification, uh, which tracks, um. The intake, the outtake, where they're at, it, how how many times we've had, uh, we've dealt with them. And then part of that too also has all of the automatic, um, I should say automation part. As far as, um, if we do the microchipping.
Yes.
Making that a part of our adoption process, um, which I really like to, um, I'm researching, I even, um, recommend that we may even change our ordinance as far. Instead of doing dog tags, we do microchipping. And just make that part of our, uh, city code. So. So, but yes.
Information out there.
Correct. And that's where. Uh, I'm not going to say we've done everything perfect. And I haven't done everything perfect since I've been back. Um, trying to work on a multitude of things. I'm just going to soak it into this. This is what the community is asking for. This is what I'm going to do.
Well, anything for the chief?
Um, the next council, I will have you, uh, dates, I'll have you timelines.
Right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, chief.
All right. So next on the agenda, uh, is our ordinance is resolutions, but before we start, we're something like make motion to read ordinance twenty twenty three. Twenty nine. Twenty twenty three dash twenty nine, thirty, thirty two, thirty three, thirty four, thirty five, and resolutions. Twenty twenty three dash twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, and twenty six by title only.
Second way, let's wait for them to get out.
One and a second. And.
Excuse me, Amy Rochette?
Yes.
That's from Cowker?
Yes.
He digging bottom.
Yes, sir.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
And Mr. Elam?
Yes.
Something like making motions, suspend the rules reading three separate occasions, ordinance twenty twenty three dash twenty nine, thirty, thirty two, thirty three, thirty four, and thirty five.
Moved.
Motion, we have second?
Okay.
Okay, roll call, please.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
That's from Cowker?
Yes.
He digging bottom?
Yes, sir.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
And Mr. Elam?
Yes.
All right. So this first ordinance is ordinance twenty twenty three dash twenty nine. Uh, this is accepting utility easement from Schuber Mitchell Homes in the Timber Ridge subdivision on steep, on Steep Road Drive. Or in that area, actually Timber Ridge Drive. But I just want to show you what the easements look like up here. We're taking, uh. Utilities been selling lots one sixteen, one seventeen, sixty three, and sixty four. We have it dedicated, we're not taking it. Anybody have any questions? Okay, councillors.
City of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty three dash. Ordinance exception dedications of public utility easements given by Schuber Mitchell Homes of twenty feet along the rear of lots one sixteen and one seventeen. And ten feet along the rear of lots sixty three and sixty four in the Timber Ridge Phase Two subdivision. Located in section thirty two, township twenty north, range thirty one west, city of Centerton, Benton County, Arkansas.
Someone can make a motion to. Adopt orders twenty twenty three dash twenty nine.
So move.
Motion?
Second.
Okay, you had missed the end.
And Josie, Jac and Josie.
Okay. Roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
That's from Cowker?
Yes.
He digging bottom?
Yes, sir.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
And Mr. Elam?
Yes.
All right, next is ordinance twenty twenty three dash thirty. I'm just correcting the scripters error. That it farms phase two final plaque. On the plaque, uh. Let's put a little cursing right there. Shepherd, which misspelled, so we're just correcting the spelling on the plaque. Any questions? None of the councillor?
City of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty three dash three zero. An ordinance connecting a, correcting a scriber error on the spelling of Shepherd Boulevard on the final plant of the Camp Farms Phase Two subdivision. In the city of Centerton, Arkansas, filed on record with the Benton County Reporter of Deeds and Records on February eighteenth, two thousand twenty two. Instrument number L two thousand twenty two, one, one, four, one, zero, and declaring an emergency.
So make make motion to adopt orders twenty twenty three dash thirty.
Hold on.
Got a motion? A second?
Second.
Amy's second, okay. Roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
That's from Cowker?
Yes.
He digging bottom?
Yes, sir.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Elam?
Yes.
Section two emergency clause. The city council hereby determines that the correction of the spelling of Shepherd Boulevard is essential to the public welfare. And must be corrected as quickly as possible. Therefore, an emergency is declared to exist. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage.
So I'm going to make motion to adopt the emergency clause.
So move.
Motion, we have second?
Second.
Roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
That's from Cowker?
Yes.
He digging bottom?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Elam?
Yes.
All right, next is order twenty twenty three dash thirty two. This is rezoning property belongs to Cindy and Joe Zumstein. From agriculture A one to neighborhood commercial C three. This property is located ten ninety two North Main Street. Which is at the intersection of Main Street, Town View, and this sits on, and also Seavey on the other side.
President Tony Steele's property.
President Tony Steele's property. And. Um, looking at the land use plan, uh, this is slated for neighborhood commercial on the land use plan. Uh, there was a public hearing at the, uh, planning meeting. There was one resident spoke. And actually, the resident, uh, when he spoke, he said he really wasn't there for that project, but he lived those close by, so he wanted to speak. Uh, he was there for a project, uh, south of here at nine seventy four Main, which is not before us tonight. Uh, but his concern was just the residential, the existing residential directly south of this property. Uh, being sandwiched in by all the commercial development, traffic concerns that come along with commercial development. That was his comment. The, uh, planning commission, uh. Went through the questions. Uh, they felt it was, uh, compatible with the land use plan. Uh, it wasn't compatible with the surrounding areas. I'm getting too far here, sorry. Okay, uh, all the permitted uses in new zone would be compatible in this location. Uh. Will not be a benefit to one landowner and. The only, uh, comment we had was the one I read to you. So with that, they did. So with that, they did make a unanimous decision to uh approve it or forward it to city council. Anybody have any question?
Can they remind me what's across from that on Seba, the commercial?
It's uh where the. Oh, the daycare is. Yeah, yeah, it's cat, it's cat. On the northwest. Then north.
Yeah, but that's gonna be moved, it's commercial. That daycare is gonna be moved.
Yeah, it's still, the property is still commercial.
Right.
But yeah, it'll be moved to further, yeah.
Also, can see it's moving?
In that same area.
Right, yes.
At some point, not.
It'll probably be moved north.
Yeah.
It's a.
And then you got the batting cages to the west.
Yeah, I, actually, I came to the last planning meeting and they got an extension on the, on the. Six month extension. Alright.
Um I'd like to make a. Who just? Um with all the commercial going in on Main Street.
State roads.
I know it's a state road and every time I bring this up.
That's fortune.
But, how?
I don't know, get it.
How do we, and I, and Bill, I know you're, you're advocating and you're sending letters. But how do we get the state to do something with Main Street?
Before it is by runaways?
Be- before it becomes a parking lot. Because with all the commercial going in. It's an, already a nightmare right now, but we've got commercial that's going and it's not even there yet. How do we get ahead of traffic and all of that kind of stuff on Main Street? Because here's what I'd like to see, I'd like to see Main Street, of course, improved before all the commercial comes in. Because right now it's a nightmare anyways. And now we're adding all this commercial in there, it's gonna be, in three years, it's gonna be a parking lot.
And less than that, because we have the developments coming on the corner of Seba and Main Street.
I know.
But I, I mean, there is, there is tunnels on Main Street, it's state, I'm like, huh, I agree.
Like, is there anything, I know you're emailing and you know all that kind of stuff, is there anything else that we can do? To get the state to recognize that something needs to be done about Main Street?
You all can rally your legislators, see if they can help us, that's about the only thing, I mean, on the state highway, or we could take it over. At some point, but I actually had Anthony uh. Calculate that and he calculated, you know, and it's, it would be twenty-one million dollars to us before we even buy right away.
But they're debilitating our ability to grow certain air, right there for commercial because of a two line road.
Yeah.
The highway, the highway department, if, if you don't. Remember was here one day last week.
They were here last.
Stay.
Yeah, it was Wednesday last week, yes.
And.
The farmers market.
They, yeah, exactly. They understand, they already know, they. Uh there was people there and, and the biggest, there was probably more people there talking. About Main Street than what they were talking about the other and, and there was one lady there that. That when I was there, my wife was there, that uh. That she said, I pulled into a parking spot, I've got a handicap. Plate and she said, I don't think I'm ever gonna get backed out.
I know, it's, yeah.
She said, I pulled in, she said, I don't know how I'm gonna get out.
I know.
She said, I may be here till nine o'clock tonight and, and the guys, they all were shaking their hand, they said, we understand, you know, then, so I mean.
Who, who needs to go to corner those, that like, who's the top one to reach out for that to get a partner?
Grant Hodges is your legislator for this area.
Yeah, but. You need to go, I mean, it, it is ridiculous.
But, but I will.
Bottles all down Main Street, get ready to hit my car by this.
And we don't even have the commercial in yet.
Yeah.
It's just rezone.
Well, many people just get hit by a car every, my work time every day, anyway.
But I mean, we're gonna be adding, you know, you've got a couple of gas stations and, you know, and so how, how do we get ahead? How do we get ahead of that?
The problem is, and, and when I was talking to, one of the, one of the things that was brought up. Is they go by traffic studies. And. Main Street and Centerton. Doesn't have the traffic. Being money being given to it compared to other roads in this area. I mean. And, and if we were to, if we were to. Take the traffic count of Main Street. And go with some of the South Arkansas streets. Or highways, this one would be number one on the list. But as far as Northwest Arkansas, it's like. You know, here's the top of the list and it's down here at the very bottom, cause it's just not enough traffic and I know.
I mean, it's, it's that egg before the uh, the.
Chicken before the egg.
Yeah, right.
And the developers, I understand is the developers come in.
The Northwest Arkansas, it's, it's not only Centerton, it's, it's every town, I mean.
I came from California, I was the exact same way.
Problem is you hit the same way Town View. You hit it with uh Seba, like you hit that two lane road.
Drive going down one oh two and Bentonville at. Three o'clock to six o'clock, I mean, it's. It's not halfway to Fish Hatchery. You know, and well, Fish Hatchery's not in there.
But then do we just throw our, our hands up and say, well, that's just the way it is, there's nothing we can do, you know, just, I mean.
We're advocate, I mean, I, I'm still, they, they acknowledged received our letter. They have not responded yet, actually, after I talked to you, I did email and see that an update.
Have you talked to Grant?
I've, I've talked a little bit about this May, but also, one thing they're gonna tell you is they got sixteen thousand miles of roads, five hundred cities, seventy-four counties and. I budgeted.
They don't have a Northwest Arkansas, that's.
I know, but I, I mean, I'm just, we're, we're trying.
Unfortunately, the money is divided four ways.
Well, and our responsibility is just to make sure that.
We'll keep after.
Have it too, I mean, they can use ours, we can use ours, right?
It's a good possibility that Grant be there.
Yeah.
This.
Well, Bentonville actually gets some roads.
The Ross.
Is there butts close for such?
Well. Have the municipal.
And I, and I will just add one more thing, you know, uh you know, with the come and go go, and they are making street improvements. Uh they are at a right-hand turn lane on Seba, you know, to come south.
And ten foot sidewalks?
And, yeah, I believe ten foot sidewalks.
Negotiation.
And then also, I just wanna say, that intersection has been approved with light.
Well, that intersection's fine.
Yeah, and, and.
Rest of it.
Yeah, before and after.
Yes.
The one, the one south there did not get through the planning commission, so. But, but I mean, they made, it been improvements, you know, and I, I see the traffic. You know, during school time, it's, it, it comes in a big traffic flow.
It don't even go that way.
Well, I, I use that light all gone home and I, anyway, you gotta just use it back.
Is that something?
Anything else? By right away. They wired it, I don't see, but we'll see what they come back with.
No, no, I mean, like the ten foot sidewalks, no. Have to come and go.
I thought they were putting ten foot side.
They are, but across the street, it's just gonna, I mean, this, like, that's the four, that's the four corner.
Should be required to developer.
And then over there on R two, that's the like empty French looking neighborhood. With the rocks falling off, you actually, it will be, they need to maintain them, by the way.
Yeah, actually, we'll be getting a plan for that in the near future. Yeah, in the future, I'm not, not how, I see they're going back and forth. Anything else on this? Counselor?
State of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash three two. An ordinance to rezone certain lands within the Centerton city limits belonging to Joseph and Cynthia Zumstein from agriculture A one to neighborhood commercials C three.
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two.
Well, man.
Do we have a motion, we have second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Amy Rochette?
Yeah.
Justin Cowker?
Wait, 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 can you state a reason?
Because of all that I discussed.
Okay, that's good, thank you. Alright, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I, I don't, I don't think that. That has a discussion we just had. Hagan Botham?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
And Mr. Eland?
Yes.
Thank you. My next is. Ordinance, let me get the. Okay, next is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three. This is rezoning property belonging to A and J Estate Holdings. From agriculture A one, medium density, single family residential, R three. Uh this property is located at one, one, eight, nine, seven Holloway Road. Uh and this is uh. If you look at the surround area, everything's, that area is, is basically, I've been rezoned to, on this side of Road R three, single family. Um and, yeah, and then over here. My little cursor is, this is where Grimsley Junior High is, a little weapon, a little plus sign, so that's great, this right here is Grimsley. And they got forty acres over here next to it, it's vacant, that still belongs to them, so. Uh this was heard by the planning commission. Uh there was two, there was public hearing, there was two comments, one was an email. Uh this expressed the traffic concerns and the desire to keep the area beautiful. Uh the second one was a resident in Tamaron, had concerns with traffic and road infrastructure. Uh and then one of the commissioners did explain that improvements come with development. And as this been built now, they have been adding sidewalks and uh doing some roadwork down there on the south side, so this will, this continue to connect it.
Bill, can you scroll up, please?
Up? This, this way?
Keep going.
Oh, you wanna go to land use plan?
Yeah, yes.
I'm sorry.
I was gonna ask as well, yes.
Oh, sorry.
I usually do that. Well, it, it does show medium high density residential on the land use plan.
Is that R three all around them?
Yes. Yeah, it's all, it's all medium high, medium density residential, yes. Sorry, but then I usually bring it up for you.
Isn't this a no box though, too?
No. No, that's all bond road. Alright, any more questions?
City of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash three three. An ordinance to rezone certain lands within the Centerton city limits belonging to A and J Real Estate Holding LLC. From agriculture A one to medium high density, single family residential, R three SF.
Make motion to adopt or twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three? Okay, we have motion, we have second? Roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
Justin Cowker?
Yes.
He digging bottom? Josie Reed?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
And Mr. Eland?
Yes.
Alright, next is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four. This is accepting the final plat of Phase Five Diamond Estates subdivision. Diamond Estates is located uh. East of. East of Keller Road and it's on Seba, just on the north side. This one of several phases in Diamond Estates, Maple Estates, this is uh back behind.
Redmond West.
Yeah, it's, yeah, that's what I was gonna say, it's to the southwest of west. Uh this was heard by the planning commission, uh they had no objections, they forwarded off to the council. Recommended approve. Questions? Well, uh, counselor?
City of Centerton ordinance number two thousand twenty-three dash three four, an ordinance accepting the final subdivision plan of the Diamond Estates Phase Five subdivision. Creating residential lots two ten through two seventy-five, city of Centerton, section twenty-nine, township twenty north, range thirty-one west.
So I'm gonna make motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-four. Here we have motion, we have second? Roll call.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
Justin Cowker?
He digging bottom?
That's right.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
And Mr. Eland?
Yes.
Alright, our last ordinance is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five. Uh this is waiving competitive bidding to the purchase of one two thousand twenty-two Ford F five fifty ambulance. Uh for the Senator Fire Department and it would be purchased from the dealer right across the street where we purchased the other two. I do have Matt here, if you have any questions, uh. Our ambulance is, uh they've been running very regularly and hard and working hard at, at, for the city. But, you know, after uh discussion with the chief, we felt it might be necessary to go ahead and have a spare, this case, you know, we do have a breakdown on one of them. So, uh that, that, we're not gonna man this ambulance, this is to be used as a spare. For now. So. Any questions?
This isn't, and our, this isn't on our budget?
It isn't our budget, yeah, five hundred and twenty-five thousand there for it.
The extra?
Yes.
And where will it be housed, will it be in our main?
I'll let, I'll let the chief answer that. I, I wanna assume it's gonna be out there, but I don't know.
Be housed at?
Well, how's it at Station One, just. Um sixty-two, well, by the beginning of July. Forty-one Station Two, cause it's going on schedule. So the uh. Evidence and everything are out there, the floors are done, they're working on painting right now, tile. So within the next two, three weeks, we'll move that ambulance to there and then we'll have this one at Station One, that way if. We've had sixty-three times since we've started the, the game of, uh, February.
We feel good about the contractors on these, we've just had some bad luck and they'll.
The contractor's been great. Everything has been, cause I've been paying really close attention to this.
Tough luck at the, at the fire park and the dog. Others, which is making sure, we're starting to mistake these guys. Start blacklisting these contractors, just.
Stays out of it. I don't leak water, so we're.
That's just great to hear.
Are the prices also included, it's got the, uh, it's got the cooler, it's got the load system. Um so the ambulance is really three thirty and then those other items, click it up to the three ninety-seven, whatever, and change.
Did we talk about having three ambulances? Okay, so, so it's in the budget just as, it's extra in the budget, okay.
We did talk about looking for another.
Get to see how it goes and then.
We did talk about looking for one, but one, we actually got lucky, cause right now finding ambulances and fire trucks is like impossible.
Car right now, it seems like.
I mean, I do do business in Centerton, you know.
Right here, and so he called me the other day, this, a New York dealer called him, and the ambulances that we run. In Northwest Arkansas are a little bit bigger than what they run in the big cities is, cause of like New York and New Jersey. So they couldn't get rid of this ambulance and so that dealer asked him if he could learn it and told me immediately and said, hey, Matt, do you want this? And I said, I'll take it to council. I mean, just for one, it'll take my stress level down, I don't, like, I got two ambulances right now that need recalls. If we have a flat tire, if you have oil changes.
We need the extra cons and stuff, too. Oh, it's sixty thousand included, it's three twenty for the ambulance and additional sixty-five.
You need a car and I looked about. Trying to do a little bit um different with cheaper mounts. But then Kansas City, or up around Kansas City about a month ago, had an ambulance crash. And they had the old system instead of the load system, cause. The load system basically grabs the whole center section of the car. And they had a crash up there. In uh Kansas City about a month ago and the patient died, cause the, that, the whole system let go of the patient and. That box came apart and. So I didn't wanna go there. So it cost like fourteen grand, I think, or twenty grand, four grand or something for a load system.
Is having, um and I'm sure you've done your research, but uh, and for this area and for the area that we service. Having three ambulances, is that normal? Having two running and always having one spare.
Everybody has one backup. And Benmo Rogers, I do not know about Springville, but Benmo Rogers actually have more than one as a backup.
That's right, so.
Running a little over five ambulance.
Yeah.
Let's say, it kinda equals out if we have two with a one backup, they're running four and five with two backups. The other thing that we've kinda got lucky on for us is. Friday, we learned the Northwest ambulance, the ones that was serviced us before. They shut down their facilities altogether, their last day's Friday.
Wow.
And so they've actually donated a whole bunch of like backboard and different stuff to us, plus. Um we just finally got approval from their CFO. Monitors a Lucas device, so basically the, the big dollar items to outfit this ambulance to make it one hundred percent. We're gonna buy like a monitor, they're charging us eleven thousand dollars for it. It was brand new, it was practiced, it's only been here in this fire station. I mean, we just gave forty-two, I think, for those ones here and we still have not received them, I mean, we're still a loner, so. Uh, I think it was twenty-three thousand dollars is what we can buy. Video scopes and everything for to outline this instead of probably seventy to eighty is what it would normally take. And if they end up with a extra car that I can buy, then I'll take it on the, this and I'll buy you a cheaper one, I just don't.
Miles does it have on it and how many is average that you would put on an ambulance?[1779.11]
Right now, we're putting on between a thousand fifteen hundred per ambulance a month.
This is brand new, right?
This is new. Because we took.
Rebates on a on a previous year.
Actually, yes. I don't know what kind of discount we got on it, but we did get a discount because the last one of these I looked at and this one's nicer than that because this is the chief that fell. But it was three hundred and fifty just for the ambulance. And so since it was coming from New York, he knocked it down. The three.
It's just gonna sit.
So I'm gonna take it. This one's gotta run. And one of the others is gonna give it back up.
Matt, are you running into any recalls on any of the other two? That would also be a very good reason to have a backup.
Of the other two ambulances have a recall about burning right now that Dodge can't fix. It's a solenoid or a relay. I forget which one that goes to the diesel motor.
Is it Dodge?
I just want to add to Amy's question though, because me and Matt had a lot of discussion about this before we brought this to you. You know, we get to the point where we need that third ambulance, you know, something's going on. It's gonna be stopped. So Matt said he would go down there and he actually drove one to a car the other day right before we had our. So, and I just want to say one thing, this this man's been working very hard on this ambulance thing, uh, you know, all through this. He's very dedicated. Yeah, no, he is. So, but I just want to recognize that he's been working very hard for this. Now he's getting ready to work hard on for you to find a couple, uh, engines and a ladder truck for us too, which will bring.
I'm just saying, we're six months into it. I just want to make sure that this is the right thing and not every six months is something new because we didn't know or, you know, that's why I'm. Asking. Like he said, we'd said, okay, let's get in, let's see how it goes, but.
He's very much with Taiwan.
I know, I want mainstream. He won't do anything about it.
If you get him twenty-one million, he'll do something.
Can you just hold the ambulance unless by half a minute?
Looked on websites since probably even. I don't know, since.
We were looking again.
We've been looking at websites trying to find some different ambulances out there. And ambulances are just like fire trucks and vehicles. They all have different crash standards to them. And the ones that we can find either have tremendous amount of use to them. Or the standards, they're kind of a cheaper ambulance to begin with, and I just really don't want to put the citizens and. My guys that have to be in them every day. I can show you pictures and documents of. If they crash one, but happens to the ones that aren't certified.
Falls do you get per day? Do you know? Just offhand?
Very, very random. It just depends on which day it is.
There has been a lot of times, I think, at two at the same time or this right, a few minutes from each other. Because I I actually get notification because I'm always looking for fire news.
Conversation a lot. He tries to ask at every meeting. And, uh. Does county or do right now unless not running outside the county.
Right, I was kind of curious.
For much longer. And so this third ambulance is gonna help here. Um.
Then are you saying that in the future we'll have to get a fourth ambulance to? Sound by?
No, because the two can handle the county stuff.
Okay.
And what I'm playing on right now, this one, I love PR events. My guys will tell you this because. They're like, we have to go to another one. But. You know, the football games, it makes sure that we can just park one there. We won't have to take one out of service to go park there or have to come from the football field. Then it can go to the PR events for like if we have touch of trucks or whatever, because as soon as you park the ambulance, they have to go on a run. And in order for an ambulance to be touch a truck. Would have to equally nothing. Before we can let people in it. I mean, just. It's like a hospital. So we're just trying to. Be out there a little bit more. It happened to us here with the touch truck with with the ambulances here weeks ago or three weeks ago. I'm trying to find you some cheaper equipment with that Northwest thing going on.
We can't get a billiard's product at Walmart price all the time.
It's stressful. It really is.
I can. Since Matt brought it up, I'm gonna say it. The citizens of Centerton. I would say are never gonna have to be put through what. The people that are in our fire district are going through. There have been times. That it has taken. Thirty minutes to get an ambulance scene.
Oh, no.
We're sending a truck with a paramedic on it. That we can do everything. That the ambulance can do except for transport. So. If you know anybody that's. That you care about that lives in our fire district. Tell them if there's any way possible. For them to get loaded into a vehicle and come to the Centerton city limits. Before they call for an ambulance, they will get service.
It's probably been two months now. Patient that was right across from Station Three. And, uh. On the county. Well. You notice the ambulance stopped with the fire truck. Because the guy was actually. You know, he was going downhill on the fire truck. So my guys just hollered at our ambulance and so they joined forces together. Got him his pulse pack and everything else and they just waited and then after transported. And they had enough time to get there on scene. The fire truck worked on them and then call our ambulance and then they come and help them getting back to going and then they were able to transport. Um, Friday night. I'll bring her Friday night, not over the weekend. I had a car crash and grab it and grab it to Benaskin for assistance or. Uh, afterwards. Dispatch, uh, our dispatch on hold. For the county, that's not on our dispatch. And so they couldn't get an ambulance. So dispatch just had to change it up since they couldn't get an ambulance for him and grab it all the way to grab a high school. They sent one of our ambulances over there. I mean, there's just bad things going on. And so it's just gonna take, you know, powers, one bad thing going on. More people yelling and it'll change.
Why move to waive competitive bidding? On a. Another ambulance.
I'll second that.
After hearing that.
Right.
So, yeah, we already did. So we can read by title. Oh, yeah, we can. Okay, yeah, no, no, we already did all that. We have any more questions? I'm sorry. I gotta head.
No, Matt answered.
Go. Twenty-three dash three five, in order to waving requirements, I'm sorry.
You're sorry.
Purchase of a two thousand twenty-two Ford F five fifty ambulance for pinnacle emergency vehicles. Centered in Arkansas for the Centerton Fire Department.
So they make motion adopt Orders twenty twenty-three dash thirty-five. Okay, we got motion?
Second.
And a second. Roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
Justin Cowper?
Yes.
He taking bottom?
That's right.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
And Misty Eland?
Yes.
All right, so now we're going to resolutions. Uh, this first resolution is Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three. Uh, this is a. A grant that the City of Centerton and the City of Bentonville are applying for. Uh, the federal grant, the Department of Transportation called Safe Streets for All. And, uh. We're applying for this grant together for twenty-five million dollars total. Uh. To widen Greenhouse Road.
Do they have an initial five million for Main Street?
It's just gonna.
I mean. We just saying like, what the heck? Like, there's your, there's your ride to the.
Anyway, this is City Street.
Uh. City Street.
But but anyway, uh. Uh, Bentonville does have a grant writer. She's and she's working with us and. So she'll be, she'll be submitting the grant. We're just, you know. Going into a jointing with them. Uh, wouldn't love to get it, but, uh, we we like to certainly apply for. And, uh.
So it's joint, like they won't get it and we won't like it's a.
Oh, it's together. And we already got one grant together. We got the one for the engineering.
Yep.
And then I just want to tell you, and I might have wrote it, I'll tell you, uh, we're gonna apply for another grant next month. The City of Centerton, City Bentonville. To, uh. And it'll be a STP GA or grant, I believe. But we're gonna apply for right away and utility relocation. It's gonna be probably at least three million dollars. Between the two cities, so.
Do we have an updated list of grants that's left to pay what we applied for and what we got?
Yeah, I I'll give it to you when I get those business. Yes, I made that up because I knew you were gonna ask.
No, I got, I can't wait to see it. I got a list.
We'll do it under the business. So let me write it down. So anyway, uh, any questions on this?
I don't have any questions on this one per se, but is there a transportation safe street that? Would apply to Main Street?
That's another one to ask.
Yeah, maybe. I guess we can always apply for it. They only got so much money, but yes.
They got deep pockets.
We got a lot of stuff coming to Main Street.
Yes, we do.
A lot of stuff coming to Greenhouse Road too.
Smaller.
I would disagree. Greenhouse is pretty narrow.
Thing with Bentonville, so I think we got that one covered.
Well, I don't know. I mean, it doesn't mean we're getting, we're applying. Okay. Any more questions?
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash two-three, a resolution expressing the willingness. Of the City of Centerton to apply to Department of Transportation Safe Streets for All SS four A implementation grant. Funding for Greenhouse Road. And agrees to the twenty percent local match required by the funder if awarded.
Some may make most to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three.
I moved.
Got motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Misty second. Okay, roll call.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
Justin Cowper? He taking bottom?
Yes, sir.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
And Misty Eland?
Yes.
All right, next resolution is twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four. Uh. This is, uh, we did put out for bid for asphalt projects for the city. Uh, we do this every single year and we only received one bid. That was from, uh, Grant Garrett Excavating Rogers. Which used to be Deco. Uh, they submitted a bid and, uh, that would be for all city projects or between now and December thirty-first. Uh, their bid was a hundred twenty-one fifty per milling, I mean, per ton, so. Any questions?
Sir. Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash two-four, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk. As representatives of the City of Centerton, Arkansas. Who entered into an agreement with Grant here Excavating Incorporated Rogers, Arkansas. For multiple million and overlay projects and other city projects due December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Make motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four. Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
Justin Cowper? He taking bottom?
Yes, sir.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
And Misty Eland?
Yes.
All right, next resolution is twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five. This is an agreement with CEI Engineering for additional flood review services. Uh, we originally approved ten thousand dollars for this. Uh, however, it did run into a little bit more expense, which, uh. Anna, who's with CEI, she actually wrote me an email, which I included. Which broke down the the additional cost. So we are asking for a change, you know, it's actually a change order for eight thousand additional dollars.
Is that the only? Company like that that we work with in the city bill? It seems like every project we've done with them, they're they're always having to come back and ask for some more money.
Oh, we deal with half, we deal with that, we deal with Carver, we deal with several of them. This is the one specializes in flood.
Yeah, I know. It seems like it's come back every time in their estimates and ask for money, which is getting a little ridiculous.
But I want you to see the breakdown.
Yeah, no, I got you. I'm just saying. Get it right the first time.
Hey, Jim. 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 Looking for the restroom? It's in there. Okay, anyway. Oh, I don't. Any more questions on this, sorry?
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash two-five. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk as representatives of the City of Centerton, Arkansas to enter into an agreement with CEI Engineering Associates Incorporated. Bentonville, Arkansas for additional flood review services for the City of Centerton, Arkansas.
So I'm gonna make motion to adopt Resolution twenty thirty-three dash twenty-five. Hold on, we have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Amy Rochette?
Yes.
Justin Cowper? Yes, sir. Josie Reed?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
And Misty Eland?
Yes.
Our last resolution. Resolution twenty twenty-three dash six. This is adopting the Comprehensive Safety Action Plan, which was put together by Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning. Uh. This is actually needed for us to apply for this, uh, grant. And I've put this in here for you for your reading pleasure. This talks about reducing accidents and things and, you know, some of the things that, you know, Amy was referring to. This is all in here.
Is this for greenhouse?
Yes. But we have to approve this plan. This is a regional, regional plan.
Also work on Main Street.
So, any questions on this?
Or has Bentonville already approved this one?
Uh, it's going to their council tonight or or in two weeks.
Okay.
Thank you. That's a good question. Yeah. I believe they might go tonight.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash two-six, a resolution to adopt a Comprehensive Safety Action Plan and Visionary Road Policy.
Some may make motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six. We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, sir.
Amy Rochette? Justin Cowper?
Yes.
Josie Reed?
Yes.
Darren Warren?
Yes.
And Misty Eland?
Yes.
Next, uh, is the reappointment of Devin Murphy. John Sessoms and Joey Engel to the Senate Centerton Planning Commission. With their terms expire in June thirtieth. Some like make a motion to agree, yes.
Question, how long do they serve?
Three years. They serve three-year terms. But there's no term limit.
No term limit?
They're staggered terms.
Yeah, they are staggered. Yeah, they're three, three. And it seems like every year. Uh, that's a good question, but every year we usually have somebody drop off, so we always have openings on that planning commission, so.
So. These ones with their term expiring the end of the month. Would someone new go about? Like is. Because they're appointed, would they have, does that person have to come to you or?
Yeah, so so there's no.
I guess my question is, was there no one else that wanted these? Positions?
We didn't open it up, but I remember us having this conversation twenty-one, you know, this is the same conversation. Uh, and, you know, uh, if if an opening is. There, then yes, we posted on our website and 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 people can apply for it. And what will happen is they apply and then the applications are reviewed by myself, the planning director, the planning director and then, uh, the chairman of. And then a recommendation is made to the council. Um, so that's that's basically how it works. Or that is how it works, not basically.
I'm just wondering why we didn't open this these up?
Sometimes it is hard to get to that commission. I mean, especially back. And this man served on there, uh, but. And I believe we have a very good planning commission. Like I said, it seems like it's building turnover anyway. It's usually, you know, once or twice a year, somebody will drop off for reasons. Open it up and it gives citizens an opportunity to apply at that time.
Yes.
I think, I think I addressed it a while back and I asked.
Twenty-one, you did.
If we could. Start posting in a couple of months before the term was up, if we could put it. I noticed that there was. Expiring. Term coming up, see if anybody. Would be interested in in, uh. Applying.
You did bring it up and then there was discussion, uh, I believe Darren chimed in on that same meeting. Uh, but, you know, we got experience on there and, you know. Uh, it is doing, yeah, there there was a long discussion about it during that meeting. And there was no action taken. I think Misty made a a recommendation, maybe we change the bylaws. Uh, she did, because I I read the minutes on that, because I wanted to see, because I remember this coming up at one point, so I wanted to see what the council said, but at the end of that meeting, there was no action taken. Then last year, we, uh, appointed three, one of them was a new one, because there was one opening, because I do ask these folks, uh, continue to serve, I put their emails inside the Dropbox there. And, you know, sometimes they say, no, Bill, I think I want to get off, then that's what we opened it up.
But the reason I bring this up is because we're for the council, we are when our term is up, we have to be voted back in.
Yes.
And I'm just thinking that maybe the people, the citizens of Centerton might be interested in, uh, their say, uh, and because you could be on the planning commission, you die virtually.
Council keeps appointing them better.
Exactly. Well, I'm thinking that we need to look at posting, uh, about two months prior.
In the future.
Well, it's definitely, I mean, the end of this month is when these.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah.
Good to know, but I mean, I I definitely think that it's something that we need to, uh, for the citizens, um.
As our city grows, there's, you know.
And I'm not saying that that for ones that we have on the planning commission are the best that's out there, uh, from our citizens, because they have to be registered voters in the city of Centerton, just like we do.
Absolutely, yeah.
They don't have to live in a certain ward or anything. They can live anywhere in the city, city of Centerton to serve on the planning commission, so, uh, I guess I'm putting a motion at this time, uh, before the council that going forward that we post like this at least two months. And I would, I would probably even say it might take three months, three months would probably be better. Give more time to put it out there and.
Have people see it, and
new interviews.
It might take, you know, for people to see it.
And look at.
Yeah, look it up, yeah.
That's my motion at this time.
Keith, can I ask a question before you move on? Um, with our bylaws, the way they're written, if I remember correctly, we are gonna have to change those bylaws prior to us doing that. Brian, am I correct on that?
I would have to review the bylaws to be able to answer that. I mean, that that said, it's my understanding, I mean, it's the council's decision. Uh, what typically happens is recommendations come to the council in regards to individuals to to serve.
Well, this will be the start.
Well, Keith, that's what I was gonna ask, could we have Brian research that? That way we're not breaking any laws by doing that without the bylaws saying that.
Okay, then I will change my motion to get it, get this started.
Instead of making a motion, why don't we just have him do it?
Get it started, just get it started. Just say, let's review it.
Let him review it.
Get it going. Let's review the bylaws and we'll.
And we could.
And I guess we.
I can't wait three minutes. Let's get it started, yes.
Sorry, Keith, I just don't want us breaking anything or getting into a bind.
I agree.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, we don't want to be.
Alright, so we wanna make a motion to reappoint this?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed?
Yes.
And we got one opposed. Anyone else?
Oh, you want to do it? You want to do it now?
I came down there.
Um, I know.
Alright, next. Alright, next, uh, I need to approve an estimate for fire truck repair for our lighter truck. Uh, it came in at twenty-one thousand one fifty and my spending limit's twenty thousand. Uh, there was no need, you know, so I just need okay to make that expense. Make 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 that motion.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Yeah, Misty and, you know, all in favor? Alright, anyone opposed?
Bill, I've got on this competitive bidding is at thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand, yes.
He set the limit of twenty thousand years ago, says that's when competitive bidding had to be done on twenty thousand. I would like to raise Bill's limit to thirty-five, well, it'd be thirty-four nine nine nine. So it would be under the thirty-five. And and the reason is, is because like this fire truck, if if it's an emergency and it's twenty-one thousand dollars, we can't, we have to put a truck out of service until it's it's done. So I think it's time that we need to up the bidding. There's Bill brings everything to, no matter if it's, I mean, eight thousand dollars for for, uh, engineering brought it to us. It's not like, and and Matt's already said, Bill is Bill is a Scrooge when it comes to spending money.
Matt likes to spend a lot.
Well, I think, I think Cody's here. Cody can tell you the same thing. Bill's, Bill's gonna put him on the spot. Anthony.
They also like, they also like to spend a lot.
But every one of them is gonna be under Bill's. You've gotta have it. So at this, at this point in time, I'm asking that the council raise the what his limit is, is to below, just below thirty-five thousand dollars to keep it.
If that's what you want to do, that we have to change the code, so if you want me to do that, I'll bring in orders next time.
We'll have to get that started then.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, I don't mind doing, I just want, you know, we have to do it by code.
He's been reading, he's been reading up on his knowledge lately. He's like, I'm ready to make some changes tonight.
I know about some of this stuff that comes in and and it's a shame that, you know, if it happens tomorrow, you have to wait till next month or call a special meeting.
I'll call a special meeting. We're not putting.
I mean, still, I mean, if it's not, it's not a fire truck, if it's, you know, something else that's not an emergency, well, then, you know, we need, uh, we need to allow it and it, if it's under competitive bidding, I think, you know, we're probably gonna go ahead and approve it anyway, so, uh.
Alright, next, I just wanted to, uh, wanted you to know that Anthony and Shannon and his crew, Josh, I think Josh is here. Uh, they've been working on with the Walmart Family Foundation on our tree grant program. I had a tree giveaway recently. Uh, but they've been in contact. Shannon put some numbers together for us. And, uh, anyway, we were able, they were able to get a grant for two hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and forty dollars for the for the, uh, trees, which I'll show you on my grant spreadsheet in a minute. I I did it for you. I knew you were gonna ask. So sorry, I just wanted to to show that to you. There's no action we got to take. Next is, uh, is we would like to surplus and I got a V I number there for you too. But, uh, we we like to surplus a two thousand fifteen Chevrolet Tahoe. Uh, it's got about a hundred fifteen thousand miles on it, uh, has some issues with it, but we'd like to have permission to go ahead and surplus that.
So moved.
And I I'm sorry, I should, the V I number is is there in the agenda. It's in the document. Okay, we have a motion and do we have a second?
Yes.
Mine. Is this just high mileage?
Yeah, high mileage. And it's got some issues with it too. Motion is second, all in favor?
I agree.
Anyone opposed? And and Justin, I just want to say one thing. You were asking about vehicles we're gonna pull on gut deals. You go outside their back doors, there's three of them.
That's what.
Yeah, one's a Tahoe, one's an Explorer, and one's a Jeep. I'll pop those on there so they bring me to keep. There's another one back there now. I didn't see the other one, so there's at least three back there. So, alright, next, I want to bring Jocelyn up real quick. And I want her to talk to you a little bit about, uh, possibly hiring a temp service where we get staffing situations like at the shelter, we get a bunch of dogs or something.
So we we talked about maybe just looking into having a staffing agency and when we do get in the run or we need some help anywhere, I'm thinking public works in the summer. Um, now with the shelter, it probably would be a good idea to have an agency on standby to just cover they need to go to training, you know, we can be very specific about what we need for coverage and what they're gonna be doing. And the good thing is that we don't have to go through the process of screening all these people and getting them hired. A lot of people that come through even for part-time are gonna need to give to, notice if they are working part-time somewhere else, or we're gonna have conflict with schedules. I think having a staffing agency ready, uh, would be a good idea.
What's the expense? What's the expense looks like on a staffing agency?
So what we, what they have quoted us is if we were to pay, and I think, did you share this document?
It's right there. And it's in the Dropbox too.
So what we talked about, which was, an example he gave me for the rate would be if we paid someone a ta- a temporary employee fifteen dollars an hour, their bill rate would be twenty dollars and seventy cents. I mean, that is, if we decide high, that would be, and that's for anything, uh, like it says on there, line industrial, groundkeepers, kennel techs, et cetera, for any administrative or or clerical personnel. The, uh, rate would be twenty-one thirty, still paying at fifteen dollars an hour. Up to fifteen. You can always, depending on if it's this, uh, limited hours in a week or whatever. I think this is a really good rate, considering they will do all the advertising for it. They will do the drug testing background. Uh, they will carry work comp and, uh,
If we have issues with an employee that comes from one of these, how does that work?
They will come in and and counsel as well and and, uh, coach. We wouldn't have to, all I would have to do is say we've had an issue and they can either come out here. If we are wanting to work it out, but just address it, then they can come out and do it on site, or if we choose to terminate the assignment, then just replace that person.
Jocelyn, are we tied to basically a subscription price each month, or is this per employee we need and also what their coverage rate, because I know a lot of them are having problems getting people to work.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, I, that's always gonna be the possibility, you know, but but there are a lot of people that go through temp agencies too. If they already have a full-time job or a or a permanent part-time, then they just want to make some extra money. Uh, this guy that I've talked to, Tech, uh, Solutions, they, uh, they do work with Bentonville, with the city of Bentonville and Rogers, Fayetteville and Springdale, actually, on all their staffing needs. So I I did reach out to all the cities and and just, you know, wanted a little bit of information about how the, what the relationship with that was, and they had nothing bad to say about this one representative. Said, you know, he's always come through, and if he's not able to fill a position, then he's very honest about it. And tells us we are having a hard time. We are also able to recommend someone. So if we do get a, uh, an applicant and, uh, we don't have a position, you know, or we are wanting to fill it with a temporary person, I can make, I can have that person go to them and say, yeah, I was sent by the city of Centerton to get set up a temp to go work an assignment for them, so we can make a recommendation.
Well, if we hire one of the, one of them that want to work for us full-time, how's that work?
It would have to be three, they would have to be their employee for ninety days before we can hire them, or we can buy them out, which we didn't even talk about buying them out, because I don't think that we, I would ever recommend doing that. It is very expensive and ninety days is our probationary period anyway. So that would work great, because we can have that person as uh, with the option of full-time after ninety days, and if they work out for ninety days, that's the probationary period. But we can also choose to to maybe do thirty more, thirty more days if we wanted to do that.
Okay, so is there an annual fee or is it just per employee?
No, it is per employee. If they're gonna bill per employee that we need, there's no exclusive contract or, you know, anything tying us to it. Not just as needed.
Okay, thank you.
More questions or? Do you have any else?
Um, I mean, I think I've worked with staffing agencies before and in fact, I ran one when I started in this field and and, I mean, I I understand it, so I know what to ask and what to look and, you know, they're not, I mean, I, the rep and I talked about it when he and I met and and he said, well, maybe I should recruit you to come over. I said, well, I just want you to know that I know what that is, what an agency does, so you can, we did discuss the, you know, what happens if if we have somebody uh, over the weekend or when their office is not open, are they replace that person? And no, that's not gonna, I mean, that's, you know, most people are not gonna answer their phone over unless we specifically, um, set an assignment up and they know ahead of time, this is what the schedule is gonna be. But I think that having that as a backup plan, just for when we do need, you know, just extra help and and, uh, I would be providing job description and job duties and everything that this person is gonna need to do, and and so they will base their, uh, recruiting and their interviewing on what we need. And, uh, he's very hands-on. He's been with the company for about eight years and 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 like I said, all the references that I got were very impressive. They they all praised him and said that he's very, uh, uh, hands-on and very, um, what's the word? I'm trying to, he like communicate well and he's always available and and will stay in and make sure of his person that's doing well and if there is, and again, the fact that he is willing to come out and and deal with any you know, issues if we needed him to, that's that's great.
That's part of their their job.
Right, yeah. But I mean, a lot of companies are not gonna want to do that unless we sign an exclusive with them or you know, and and he says we're not, you know, just he wants to to be able to help and he's he knows that. I mean, he's got two big cities, three big cities. You know, he does, I mean, he's doing this, this too.
It's good to see you, Jocelyn.
Well, thank you. I've been here before.
Is there any, all we have here up here, is there any? I'll take the offline. Thank you for bringing that. I agree. I mean, summer's probably hard. I mean, it could be easier to find people out of college, but.
But but the, I like the idea of being able to refer our applicants, because if we, if we have somebody that we think I don't have anything except that. You know, why not refer that? They will be, and we, he and I talked about, and I I didn't invite him, but I wish he had, but he and I did talk about, um, so if I make the referral, if I give you an employee, basically, you're not having to recruit this person, you're getting them from me. If if we want to hire this person full-time, will you consider letting them go before the ninety days? And he he said, yes, that's something that we can. So I mean, it seems like he's willing to work. And again, because for not finding that contract or doing anything exclusive, and if we, uh, get into what we're talking about, then we move on. That's simple. And he knew, he knows that. So, I mean, I like the, uh, opportunity to have those that have the agency. So we don't, you know, we don't run into, we don't have anybody, and then it's gonna take two weeks to get somebody hired and and put through orientation and everything else.
Awesome. Very like numbers based, it's some quick numbers, aren't I did, I did cost savings. Um, so like my kennel techs I just hired.
Excuse me, did you say cost saving?
Right. Um, so this is something that'd be nice in the back pocket in case we have issues like we ran into over the last three months of hiring. Is actually, so for my kennel tech right now, uh, with salary and benefits, it actually comes out at twenty dollars and eighty cents an hour, uh, it's just every twenty, so.
Were you saving that in your pocket for the end of the night right there?
I just, I hit the numbers on my computer and it just, uh, it's a, it's a little bit of a cost savings, especially if that's around here, or for when we really need somebody.
So so, talking about kennel tag. Acting, um, company. Is that something that they would do?
Yes. They will even do, there's a lot of agencies that won't do anything to with shelters because of the.
There's a lot of training involved.
Or knowing or anything like that, but they will, they do have the insurance to cover all that, so they can do a seasonal or tax, you know.
It's a paywork. They negotiate their pays, like when you sign up for the step, if I wanted to sign up for a staffing agency, do I negotiate my pay? That's a paywork. They negotiate their pays. Like, would you sign up for the sta- if I wanted to sign up for a staffing agency, do I negotiate my pay?
Not really. I mean, I, we can say, that's why I, I, I had him give me a rate for fifteen. Because I mean, lower than that, I don't know if we would get, other than the, for a splash pad attendant, you know, maybe.
I didn't know if someone set up.
But yeah, I mean, uh, applicants will come in and say, I'm, I, I do want to do some temp work, but I won't make less than this. Oh, obviously, but, um.
Yeah, you establish the rate. And then the staffing company, when they have somebody come in, that person says, I'm looking for something in this area making, you know, fifteen bucks an hour. And the staff.
Black for a shelter group. For a shelter assistant. Maybe we're not gonna call them a, a kennel tech, because they're not gonna do all the job duties of a kennel tech. But if we're just needing somebody to help, you know, with baths or, uh, walks or cleaning, something specific. We can give them a, a specific set of duties and, and we can say, I'm, you know, this is all they're gonna do. We're not gonna have them deal with anything else that a kennel tech would. And we're gonna do thirteen fifty now. I would, I wanted something set. Uh, I wanted an actual billing rate for fifteen. Just so if we have to get to that, fifteen and not be surprised. Oh, well. You know, it's getting higher, so.
I'd like to make motion to allow us to go ahead and, uh. I want an agreement with T E C Staffing Services. Got a motion. We have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Thank you.
Anyone approve? Anyone? Oh, sorry, I drew a blank. All right, so it's other business. I have a couple of things I wanna bring up first. And then I believe Josie has something she wanted to bring up, and then we'll go around the table. And while Josie's talking, I'll get the grant spreadsheet put up for, you know, so we, I can discuss that with Justin and, and the council. So, uh, first of all, uh, a- as we know, I, we do have two current openings, uh. For department heads within our city. We have, uh, financial director open, and we also have the, uh, public works director open. And for the last three months, uh, uh, well, first of all, I've, I've had two employees, Shannon Zapatini. And also Anthony Martinez, when those jobs, uh, became open, they both came to me and they, uh, asked that, hey, Bill, I would like to be considered for the job. Will you give me a chance? So I've been evaluating both of them for the last three months. And, uh, both have been doing an excellent job. And I just want to tell you something, just a little, something about each one of them that you might not know. So Shannon, you know, she, uh, she's actually been working for our city for three and a half years. The last two years, she's been actually off and on, uh, filling in the role as the financial director. Uh, she does have a four-year, uh, business degree. She's also certified in H R, so she can help Jocelyn. Well, Jocelyn's good. And, uh, she, she's also, prior to coming to us. She, uh, has served as an office manager and also bookkeeper, uh, for seven years. Uh, so she's, uh, she's got a little bit of a background. Uh, her whole staff's here with her tonight. And, uh, I've been observing them. There've been a lot of cross-training going on. And, and that's one thing I've, I've been real proud, cause I, I told Shannon, we need to cross-train. So if somebody's out sick, somebody leaves or whatever. Uh, we have had. So I've been very satisfied with, uh, what, what they've been doing, the whole staff. They've been doing great. Uh, I want to tell you a little bit about Anthony.
Hold on, one thing. She, I don't think we could be in the place that we had if she had not cleaned up some of the. Challenges that we've had over the last couple of years. And so she did step in and help a lot, so.
Yes, she did. Yes, I, I agree with you. All right, so Anthony, I want to tell you a little bit about this, this man, cause you might not know some things about Anthony. So Anthony's been with your city for fifteen years. I actually met him back when the sheriff campaigned in one time. And we've met and made a little relationship. So I've known him for a long time. But he started here, uh, with the Senate and Police Department. He was an officer here, then he was a sergeant, and then he was my assistant. You know, he, he came to be my assistant for a little while. That's back when we only had twenty-two, twenty-three people here. So we had very few people. Then Anthony started the code enforcement. He came to me and said, Bill, uh, we really, we really have some code issues here and. You know, I was doing a lot of it and so was Robert, but he said, you know, we, we can do better. So he started that program. Also, now, you know, due to our population, we're an M S four city. Uh, Anthony started that program and has overseen that. And then also he's been the compliance superintendent. Uh, with our city up there, Public Works, and, uh, most recently he has been the assistant, uh, Public Works Director. He's been in the Public Works Director or Public Works Department for eight years. He also has a four-year business management degree. And, uh.
From Oklahoma State University.
Yes, from O S U. And, uh.
Keep that in mind, Bill.
So, yeah. Okay. Anyway, and, and he's done a great job. He, he's, uh, done a lot of cross-training up there too. A lot of training has been going on. I've actually, uh, been, you know, and, and a lot of his employees are here tonight too. And, uh, you know, there's support for both of these folks. I fully support him. And at this time, uh. I am going to announce that I am going to promote Shannon Zapatini to our financial director and Anthony Martinez to our. I'm emotional on the way. Public workers. Well, council, you have any questions before I move on to the next thing? Okay, not hearing none. So next, uh, I want to give the council an update on the community building. Uh, and also the crossing downtown while we're at it. We actually met with Dave Morris today, me and Anthony and, uh.
Thanks for the month.
Yeah, we're still trying to walk, work with the crosswalk. They're wanting us to give up five parking spaces down there. But, you know, we're, Anthony. Yeah, it's, it's a regulation. So actually, uh.
Five parking places where the.
Right across from the Raven.
In front of.
In front of the Raven. Yeah, right, yeah, right in front of gazebo. So we, anyway, so Anthony actually got a little creative, you know, said, hey, we can do this, this, this and this. So we're gonna probably not lose as many, you know, we'll be able to get some parking spots in there. So we met with Dave. We're gonna send it back to our dot, say, hey, we wanna, you know, give this a shot. We, we agree with you. Uh, Dave Mars will take care of the sidewalk on the, his side of the road, make it A D A compliant. We'll put a strip it in, lights and all this stuff to, to make this work. If we need a safe cross. Uh, so. Also on that community building, uh, I'm still, and, and Brian is setting up a meeting with the city of Bentonville. We're just having a hard time getting together, cause I wanna make sure, you know, however we do this, whether we hire a construction manager or put it out for bid or what. Uh, since they've done the same thing with their lot, you know, they have a coffee shop inside. That's where the hangup is.
Where?
Inside the cit- the old city hall. We wanna do a coffee shop.
The library piece?
Yeah, it'd be all part of it. So we just wanna make sure we do everything right before I bring it back to you. You know, I, I want all do, buy the little ball and book. I don't want Shannon yelling at me because I didn't do it right. So, uh. Anyway, so I will keep the council updated on that. We wanna get this thing moving. Uh, and I think that's all I have on, uh, that building for now. So I wanna turn it over to Josie. She wants to talk to you about something. In the meantime, I'll get the grant spreadsheet pulled up.
Oh, you're good. Well, just email it. That's fine.
No, no, I want you to see it. I've put a lot of work in, a lot of work into it.
It's fine.
Why don't you say it?
So I have an update. We had a meeting this morning. These, um, at, the Advertising Promotion Commission met. And when John with Truly Local did his presentation for a Chamber of Commerce, and we accepted his. Contract, so he is going to be starting a chamber for the city. Um, I had talked to other chambers. True, Truly Local, John.
It's the guy from Springfield?
No, he's from McDonald County.
The guy that Cam presented?
Yes, yes, they did the same presentation. And Justin, I have talked to, I talked to a chamber in Salome Springs. I reached out to Ju- to, um, Rogers Lowell, Chamber of Commerce. It's time we start doing something for our businesses. I mean, we talked about this, I'm gonna say almost a year ago. Got money in the budget, voted on.
What's he charging us?
It's twenty-five hundred a month. Look, did you look at his PowerPoint, Justin?
I wasn't impressed.
To see what his credentials are and what, what his timeline is and he's.
I, no, I think it's great.
He's gonna find, he's gonna provide us a timeline tomorrow, because the one was based off of months ago when he presented to us. And so he's gonna get that to us tomorrow.
And we need one here. There's our doubt.
That's, 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 I feel like that's kind of where we were at. We're.
Is it, is it by month or do we sign like an agreement for?
It's, so he's, he normally does a year agreement. However, he said we could get out of it anytime that we want to. If he, if we feel like he's not reaching his goals. We can say, you know what, John, this isn't working.
I wish we would have stayed with someone local. That's just.
Well, there's, I mean, there's pros and cons to that. So I'm just saying, if, I know, if. But they actually had an expo up there a couple of months ago, and I was impressed. They had sixty booths. This is McDonald County High School. They had over a thousand people that came through there. So.
So let me ask you folks next.
You know, more for beer because of our population.
What is his goal? Just to get a, like, uh?
It's to get a chamber up and going, to get a board and get a chamber up and going.
Will he help, like, advertise that since we were just, say, hey, here's the, here's the framework, here's how you get a chamber, like?
No, he would actually get a chamber up and running. Board members interview people for the board. He would get it all up and running. And he, he, his plan is to have it self-sufficient.
So he'll interview, do the interview and everything?
He will do interviewing, he'll do board interviewing.
No extra expenses associated outside of that.
Right, right. And he will, he will probably wanna meet with each one of us to get an idea. Okay, what, what, what is your thoughts on this? So, so please expect to have some meetings with him, also get set up, because he is.
A lot better that he interviews and does that process.
Yes, absolutely.
I was not impressed as a presentation, but I also imagine there's some nerves there too, but. Definitely interviewing the board and that takes a load off of additional time.
Right, right. I think, I think you've gotta get that foundation. You've gotta get it built and how, if not being done. And so. This is an area that we all agree that we need to be doing more for our businesses, promoting our businesses here.
Well, we need this, this period. And that's just part of it as well.
Exactly. We need to bring, but as well, he's got economic development in there. So yes, it is part of that as well.
Josie, is this something that Brian has looked at as far as contract wise, or is that?
Yes, Brian did review the contract. It's been a few months ago.
He's gonna re- he's gonna review it again.
No review.
I understand there's been changes that I've not seen yet. Is that correct? I reviewed it.
Yeah, you reviewed it, and then it's also, but it was also sent to municipal league for review.
Yeah, it's coming back to you.
Yeah, we'll come back to you. He, he said by the end of the day tomorrow.
You're gonna get it.
I do like the fact that I, so that, that, that helps. A lot more investment from, not that we don't wanna help. Didn't wait.
And, and it, and it didn't appear to be long-term, probably no more a year.
Right.
And, and the A P had plenty of money and they had money.
Well, we had budgeted twenty thousand and we hadn't done anything in here. We're halfway through the year. Not to say we should spend money because we have it, but not by any means. But it's an opportunity that we, we have and voted yes.
So is this will be contingent on Brian's approval of the contract, correct?
Should be. I, I know I made some changes last time, so I'm, uh, I'm gonna see if they're still in there.
Yes.
Okay, I just want her to, I, I asked her, they had an A P meeting today.
Yeah, that's one.
And if you wanna watch the meeting, uh, you know, I do have it on our YouTube channel. I put the A P and this meeting on there. So it's only probably. Thirty-five, forty minutes. And then you can see, you know, cause they ask a lot of questions. You know, there's a lot of questions asked, but I, I didn't care. No, I asked Josie at the end, since she's the chairman. Please bring it back to the council and then keep them in the loop. So she's done that. All right. I got this, so I want you to see real quick. And I could email this, but these, these are grants we receive. I gave you some, but I've updated since I have to send it to you. Well, we have, we, we got some penny grants. We've received four, over four million dollars of grants since two thousand nineteen. Uh, but I got these, these.
Those grants we didn't receive were the ones.
Yeah, the ones that are blank, we did not get. And the one here says granted. That's what we did receive. Like, there's one here, I re- I applied for two hundred and fifty thousand. We only got one fifty. That's okay. Hey, one fifty's better than nothing.
But the other, the tree grants, we never applied for any of those.
No, no, we, no, we, we applied for them. They're, they're on it right. Yeah, here, there, three in a row. I didn't, they gave us the amount.
Okay.
They just, we didn't ask for a certain amount. They said, here you are, Bill. Here it is.
I love it.
And then here's the ones we've recently applied for, you know, car, you know, for sidewalks. We're gonna apply for two for five hundred thousand, Fish hatchery road, the outdoors grants, uh, and then also the Bentonville one we just, uh, applied for. So I'm gonna keep this running spreadsheet. The only time you wanna see it, I'll, I'll keep it on my computer here, cause I wanna know too. Cause we're, we're getting real aggressive on this. I don't know if it's track.
Would you mind sending this, this, just this version? I know you, it's.
I'll send it to you.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Any other business?
Bill, could you also put a, um, column that shows the percentage that we're responsible for if we get it or for whatever we get?
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty percent.
Yeah, yeah, I can. I'll just maybe, yeah, yeah, I'd be happy to. Most of them are eighty, twenty.
As in, they, yeah.
Yeah, we pay twenty percent, they give us eighty. The, the tree grant, I mean, the, uh, outdoor parks recreation, that's gonna be fifty, fifty. And Parks Recreation Fund has enough to cover the, the other fifty percent.
You know.
But yeah, I, I'll do it, Missy. I'll, I'll fix that for you.
Thank you. That'll just help us keep earmarked what we've got going.
Oh, absolutely. You're right. I agree. All right, anything else? So I don't hear any other business. So the only other thing I have is I wanna tell you, we have coffee to make on Saturday, uh, this Saturday, nine A M. And with that, with something like making motion to adjourn. You have motion, we have second? All in favor? Anyone oppose? You can stay on. Now, see you later.